Okay, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hey, guys.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hello.
We also have Julie, Colin, Jess, and our special little guest on our team. Hi, Grace.
Hi.
She's all dressed up today and she's so cute. How are you guys doing where you are in the world? Let us know in the comments. Let us know where you're coming in from. We were just joking around about how we're all, you know, kind of getting festive in holiday-y and it's negative 12 where Jess is and Julie's in Florida. I'm East Coast, Colin's West Coast. We've got Greg and Amanda right in the middle in Fargo. We're happy to have you guys here from wherever you are in the world. We've got a really exciting thing to share with you today. I had hoped to share it with you personally, but I'm not the tech person here, believe it or not. And thankfully, we've got a guy who made the thing, who's going to be able to walk us through and show us all the stuff. So, so just real quick, some housekeeping. If you're brand new here and you don't know what the heck I'm talking about, welcome. We are Get Oiling. We are a platform built by and for young living brand partners to help you grow your business, to manage your contacts, to get seen, get found. And even if you have, you know, sort of parallel interests and businesses that you have that you want to feature, we have the ability to plug everything in in your personal brand. Under one roof on the Get Oiling platform, we meet every week at noon, totally for free, just like this, live. And then we, of course, put these recordings onto our YouTube channel, youtube.com/getoiling. We've got hundreds, literally, of hours of training on all kinds of topics to help you grow your young living business. And then we have everything you need to grow it, but the VO all under one roof. And we plug in seamlessly with your favorite content providers for young living. So if you don't want to write your newsletters, we've got friends who can give you buttons to press that bring those straight into your account. We're just a couple more buttons. You can send everything off to your customers on the first of the month. All right. So today, big, big topic. And that big topic is we now have an app, which means you do too. Right? And so you're going to learn what that means here in just a few minutes. If you came here, though, with questions, or, you know, maybe you're just here to be super distracted by this adorable baby down here in the corner. I certainly am. But go ahead and leave your questions in the Q and A. If you are here today and you need help with something, we have saved space to help you. So if you have questions, even if it has nothing to do with the app and what we're talking about today, please go ahead, add those to the Q and A. These live calls are live work sessions to work with you and serve you. So if we need to come out, bring you out, we chat together, we look through things together on your site or wherever. However, we're here to help you today. So don't forget that. We also have an exciting announcement to share after we get through showing and telling this amazing new tool that you get to use to grow your business. And so just make sure that you stay tuned for that, because if you want 2022 to be your best year yet, you're going to want to know what we've got in store for you. So without further ado, yeah, everybody, let's just focus on, can I, can I spotlight you real quick? I mean, a spotlight. Yes, there she is. Hi, Grace. Everybody wants to see the baby. Hi, Grace. She's so cute.
Can we say hi? Smile.
Oh. Thank you for your cameo. All right. So back to, if I could get back to this, there's our gallery. Okay, so we've got folks who have downloaded the app already. If you have questions, please make sure you come over and, and ask them in the Q and A. We've already got a couple of good ones coming in here right now. So one thing I do want to preface before we go and we show you this app. Number one, when you find this in the App Store, it's not going to be called Get Oiling. Now, there's a, there's a reason for this, a very specific strategic reason for this. Do you want every single person who joins a free thing that you have, maybe you have it inside of your member area on your site, to know right away that oils are a thing you sell? Or that you are a brand partner for a company that sells oils? Is that something that you want all of your leads to know right away? Probably not, right? You want to be able to make that introduction when the time is right. And so the name of the app is Attract Well. Now, that may sound familiar because it is also the name of our kind of carbon copied platform that we market to coaches and practitioners. So, you know, different types of wellness coaches, realtors, things like that. Now, if you have young living and you are growing a young living business, Get Oiling is all you need. It has everything that Attract Well has, plus everything you need for young living specifically. But the app that you will be getting and using is called Attract Well in the App Store. Now, the reason why this is important for your leads is that when you want to share your app, meaning your member area, that will live on the homepage of their phone screen or their tablet screen, you get to share this with them as well. And it's going to be called Attract Well, because that is just going to be a little bit more neutral of a name. But then when they open it up, they can go straight into your member area. You're going to see what that looks like here in just a minute. Now, the other thing, real important caveat, we are going to wind up doing a lot of training on this. So we're not going to cover every single thing and how every single thing works on this call. So please give us your questions so that we can be better informed as to how we can support you in using this and providing more training that's more targeted to what you need. But today, I think we're just, you know, going to do an overview of what this looks like. You can now manage your Get Oiling and thus your business from your phone, from wherever you are, by simply tapping on your screen and going straight to your contacts, adding your contacts, sending a campaign, editing a page, grabbing a link, whatever it is that you need to do. And then, of course, there's lots of more interesting implications that I guess I'll kind of narrate as Greg is showing and telling and sort of interject, hey, guys, you'll use this for that. But yeah, let's, let's go ahead and hop into that, Greg, if that's all right. And, and we'll start showing you guys what's in store.
Let's be going. So I'm sharing an emulator here. Does it show up at all?
Yes.
Or is it showing like a whole screen?
Actually, no, this is the whole screen.
Oh, okay. That's a lot of junk. We don't need them. Let's see here. If it's going to do that, then I'm going to try to find a news. Let me try this just one more time and see if the simulator will actually share. It's like a weird windowy thing.
There it is.
There. Okay. Excellent. Now you can probably see it instead of that oversized monitor that I've got. Cool. Okay, so this is the first thing you'll see when you, you or whoever installs the app. But, but yeah, like Ashley was saying, this app can be used. It hooks you up a email address. So you can use it for your back office. You can use it for the member area. If you happen to have a team account, in other words, having access to somebody else's back office, because, you know, you're helping him out assistant wise or whatever, that will show up here too. So it basically combines all those accounts. And if you're, you know, there's a handful of people who have like both a Get Oiling and an Attract Well account, those will all show up here. So you literally just need the one app for anything that you do, if you're going to be using an app, of course. So first time you download it, you'll see this screen. We've made this super simple because we know that it's not just you, this logging in. There's all sorts of other accounts. Nobody wants to remember, remember 27 different passwords when you're on your phone trying to type with your left hand. So really, all you need to do is connect up each email address that you have on various accounts. And then it will let you in. So in this case, I think I'm just going to use, we have a, this is our test account, our famous fake person, Jane. And so type in the email address and we'll get an email. Hopefully it'll arrive soon. Yesterday, there was a delay in, in the arrival. But when that arrives, I will be able to click it and then it'll come in here. So I'm checking my email. Essentially, what it's going to do is send you an email where you can click the link and it'll essentially, you just like, it proves ownership. They have an email under that email, which is then connected to the account. So it's sort of like doing, if you're familiar with like how password resets work, it sends a, sends your link to your email to confirm it. That's essentially kind of what's going on here, because I know some people had some concerns about, well, if it's just email, can anybody get in? And no, you can't. You can't just get in because you have an email address. You actually have to own that email address and to be able to get to it as well. So, so yeah, that's, it's definitely secure from that aspect. I just wanted to, to mention that as well. And what I'm going to do here is, let's see, where did that one go? I wonder, hopefully this is, I'm not getting an email, of course.
I got an email, Greg, and I clicked to confirm. So you should be good.
Wonderful. Okay. I wasn't sure where it went to. So I'll go ahead and click it. Ah ha, there it is. All the accounts now magically appear. And, okay, so you're going, on this screen, you're going to see kind of the list of all the accounts that you have, as well as a way to link another account on the bottom. So if, you know, there's some people who like, maybe they'll buy a course from somebody else who has a Get Oiling system. Maybe they used a different, maybe you used a different email address. You just click that, essentially go through the same process that you already did there. In this case, so Jane here belongs to three different accounts. So one is a back office account, which happens to be her Get Oiling back office. She has her own member area, which is what this is. And then this other section that just says member area. This is the, she belongs to the main Get Oiling community that we have as well, that has access to some courses in there. So for people that are installing your app that are in your contacts or in your member area, they're only going to see this bottom section here about the member area. They can go ahead and link another account if they happen to have more than one or whatever. But the, the majority of people are probably only going to have one. If they do, they'll have more than one account. If there's more than one in a different section, they'll all show up here. So this is kind of like your master list of all the accounts. And really, all you have to do, it's really simple. You just tap on it on the account. I do want to mention this. If you ever want to disconnect it, there's this little X. For example, if you're getting rid of your device or something, you can exit out or, and then it'll delete the email address. You can always reconfirm it if you want to get it back in there, but that's how you clean it off. And then it would take away all the accounts that are connected to that email. Anyway, so go ahead and click it here. And I'll pop into Jane's back office. And it'll load up here. You can see essentially Get Oiling is tucked inside the app here with our nice little banner reminding us of the meeting that we're on right now. But everything is available here. So there are on the bottom that, to navigate around, there's a few different things to get around. So these five are the same on, I think, both the Apple and the Android app. I'm demoing Apple right now. If you hadn't figured that out, there's some slight differences between Apple and Android that I can show you. Well, I can't show you, but I'll describe here in a minute. But you've got a quick navigation to your dashboard, contact, Zoom meeting, setting up your website, and the two-way texting feature. So you just tap on that, you know, for these common ones, it'll, it'll pop you right to whatever section that is that you want to edit, quickly set up a Zoom meeting. One note with Zoom, you do have to have the Zoom app installed on your phone. Otherwise, it gives you some goofy error message that Ashley and I ran across when we were testing. But so if you come across some error when you're launching your Zoom meeting, just make sure you have the Zoom meeting app installed. That's a separate download. But, but yeah, it does nicely open and launch the Zoom meetings from here, which is really cool. Combine that with recording, you have meetings on the go. Yeah.
Yeah. So could we go back to that main, the main page real quick? So that I've seen some questions come in and some comments come through of folks maybe not being able to get in and see their stuff in here. So you want to make sure that you're using the correct email address. So for your Get Oiling account, the email address that you use to log into your Get Oiling dashboard is the first one that you want to put in here. Now, if you have used other email addresses, for instance, to sign up for other Get Oiling or Attract Well users' member areas, those can all show up in here as well. So vaults that you've purchased, courses you're a part of, your own, if you have a Get Oiling and an Attract Well account, which very few of you do, but some do, then all of this can be here, but you have to set it up with those, the actual email address that you use for your account. So if you're not seeing it, then you want to double check and make sure, maybe go log in on your, on your desktop or wherever you normally log in to Get Oiling and just make sure you're using that email address.
Yes. Thank you. So, yeah, let me pop back into Jane here, into her back office, just showing you the bottom nav. And on iOS, there's this backlink. It kind of behaves like the backlink in your browser goes back a page. If you, if you need that, Androids have a hardware button, typically a hardware button on your phone that will go back for you. But the rest of the system is not just these five things. If you click on the little triple bar on the left, and this is the same for iOS, Android, Android, you get your full menu available to you. So you can go through and click around and find whatever it is that you're looking for in your account. There's a couple of minor differences. There's no big floating help button here. That's here. So if you need help, pull open that side menu. And I think you can actually swipe in some cases. I probably can't do that with my computer here. But when you're on your phone, you can like swipe from the left over to the right a little bit. You don't have to hit that arrow and it should pop up in the menu. But as you click help, it'll slide open the help center on top of what you're doing with all the help plugged right in. You can close that as well. The other main differences are, if you click on your name here, it'll take you to essentially like in, when you're logged in on your computer, your name is in the upper right-hand corner. If you need to change your contact information or your password or whatever. The other thing to note here is that this is where you can also manage your devices for app notifications. We won't get into that a whole lot today because there's so much to be going on with that. But you can see all the different apps that are, or the devices that are connected to your account right here. And this section only shows up if you've ever used the app. So you can manage that. Like if there's a device that you don't want to get push notifications, you can turn that off because you can connect multiples. You know, if you have a phone and a tablet, you can totally get more than one device connected to your account. Or if you don't, if you sell one, you can go ahead and delete the device so that it's, it's off of there and not on your list anymore. But but yeah, so, and then the other thing is you can switch your account here. So other, other than that, so I'll go ahead and switch the account. This takes you back to that main list of all your accounts. And we'll see now, like I can come in here and I'm going to click ahead or click on to her member area. Now, this is Jane logging, when it says my member area, that's Jane, in this case, logging into her own area, member area as an admin. So if I click on that, you know, you can, this is where you can go into your member area, schedule posts in your discussion rooms, look around all your vaults, all your vaults will show up here because you're an admin and you just, you know, you can pop into any of these, just as you would on your computer or your phone. You know, if I want to find my community chat here and, and schedule a post, you can totally go ahead and do that. Write a post in here and then, you know, schedule it off. If there's a little icon, it's all here. It's really, really kind of cool. And going back to the other lists or the menu here is a little bit different. So I'll show you this in the member area. It shows all the vaults that someone is in. So you can quickly navigate on the left, any of the vaults that you're in. And if you have notifications, there was, I think there's a little alarm bell icon on the computer. It'll show up here. You can tap that for the notifications that are in there. And then I think this takes, this tapping the vault name itself takes you back to the main, I think the dashboard of the member area. And then, of course, you got your my account, which they can use also to manage their own devices. If you click there, if they click their own name in the member area, that's where they would go add, remove devices for push notifications, app notifications, then you can switch your account as well. The other thing you'll see on the bottom here is that you have the bottom navigation that expands a little bit. Every time I drilled in a couple of levels in here, you can go back home or you can hop right back to the top of the abundance wellness or whatever your vault name is will show up there. It shows the first few characters of that for you. So. But yeah, it's really awesome. You don't need to know any passwords. You just connect it up with an email address. You can get in and out of all these apps really easily. And it will also, for your back office notifications, it will also, assuming you accept push notifications, because when the app first starts, it'll say allow notifications from Attract Well. Assuming you say yes, and there's certain events that happen that you'll get a notification for on your phone that'll take you to like the contact. For example, if you get a new lead and you tap that notification, it'll take you to that contact. I mean, you'll also still get the email and everything. But it's an additional layer of messaging that kind of arises above the text message chat, as well as another thing that will take you to to that spot into the text messaging chat to that contact. So you can chat back and forth with them as well. So, yeah, it's really, really pretty exciting here. Is there anything that actually comes to mind?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple of questions here. I got a question about whether this works on tablets. The answer is yes. Greg, you tested this pretty extensively on an iPad, right?
I did. Yeah, yeah. And I mean, I can switch my emulator here to be, I guess I can't do it on the fly, but I could pop it up to be an iPad. It does work with that as well. So.
Awesome. There's, there are a couple of comments that came through as well, that when they, when users signed up, they put their email address in, they're seeing other people's member areas. This is you seeing your entire sort of panel of access to your back office, your member area, as well as the member area of anyone from whom you've purchased a course, who has Get Oiling or Attract Well, or if you're a part of a free group or something like that. I think I see, I think somebody said, they saw Living the Good Life with Martha, right? So Martha Crete, a lot of her programs and courses are on the Get Oiling platform. And so you will actually see if you've purchased things from her, if you've purchased from Simple Grace Collective, or if you purchase from, from our friends at YL Customer Delight, anyone who sells things that are attached to a vault, you're going to see their member area in this panel as well. And this kind of reflects what your and your, your leads, your, your customers are going to see and experience, right? They're actually going to see when they log in, the member area, right? Basically from member area down. So they'll see yours if they've purchased from other people who also have Get Oiling or Attract Well accounts, they'll see those member vaults there as well. There was a question about whether or not someone would be able to see their website. So would a, a lead, for instance, be able to see, to see Jane's website from inside of this app? It would need to be linked from inside the member area, right?
It would have to be. Yeah. I mean, because you can, inside your member area, like the description, this is Jane logging into somebody else's member area. And in this case, it's the main Get Oiling one. But there's many places inside there where you can, you know, this could have a link in it. You could have it on a page that's inside here. If you want, inside one of your vaults. Yeah, you could link that. If you want it to open, like not inside the app, by default, I think all the links open up inside the app. So if you wanted that to open separately, there's something you can do, contact our support. We can give you a special link that'll make sure it opens outside of the app. Like, I don't know if this will work on the simulator. I'll give it a try. If I go back into the back office, for example, and I click on, whoops, I need to actually click on it. And I click view my site, I think this is going to open or it should open. Yeah, it opens Safari in this case. And pulls up Jane's site. So this is outside of the app. But, so there's a way of doing that if you want to. Just contact our support and we can help you with a link like that. But you can, you can link to it from there. It doesn't do that. It doesn't provide a link to the website by default, but you can if you want.
Okay. And you will see, guys, in multiple cases, I mean, how many of us, just a quick show of hands, how many of us have more than two of our own email addresses? It's like most of us, right? Most of us have a number of different email addresses. And sometimes we forget what we sign up for one thing or another thing with, right? So if you are not seeing something that you've maybe purchased access to inside of this app, when you, when you add your email address, just scroll down to the bottom of the app and add another account. And so basically, all that is, is you're just adding your other email addresses that you use. And any kind of credentials that are attached to those will be loaded here on the app. So this is going to be a great resource for, for, again, for our broader community who are, in a lot of cases, buying and selling courses and programs inside of vaults to each other. You're going to be able to see everything that you've purchased access to from multiple email addresses. And of course, everything that is yours, where it says my member area, all inside of this one dashboard. Which is super, super convenient, right? Because how many of us have gotten frustrated because we have bought something or we have access to someone's member area, or maybe even our own. But like our password saving magic things on our computers have like told us that we have the wrong password because we're trying to use our Get Oiling login to log into a thing that's not our Get Oiling back office. This makes sense of all of that. So all you have to do is just have your app and you're good to go. So if you, yeah, if you don't see a member area, it could be that you don't have one of your own setup, or you have not joined someone else's, or you just need to add another email address to the accounts there. Let's see. And if you, if you have purchased something from someone and you're not seeing what's there, just double check and make sure that you've signed up for it correctly. Maybe go and log in where you would have normally accessed those materials and just verify that you've got the correct email address in there. Let's see, would a member be able to see my website? Yeah. So that's, that's going to be potentially if you link your website from inside of your member area. So in terms of how you use this app with your people, it's going to be to share your member area. For those of you who have moved your groups off of Facebook, or you're in the process of doing something like that, this is going to be a phenomenal way to keep people engaged, right? To get people to show up. Because in a future training, we're going to show you guys how to use push notifications, which is something that bypasses email or text. They don't have to go open their email. You don't have to worry about texting them. It will literally push a notification to their phone. Like we get notifications from other apps like Facebook or Messenger or whatever. So we really are almost replacing Facebook in that way by sending push notifications. You can send them individually. You can send them in bulk. You can send out, you know, notifications for people, you know, conversing in your discussion room, lots of great potential here for that. So this is really going to be a hub for your vaults, right? So those of you who are using vaults, this is how you'll be using this app with your people. Now, for everyone, regardless of whether you're using vaults, this is going to be a great way for you to manage your own account on the go and to have just that quick and easy get to what you need when you need it on your phone screen or your, you know, tablet screen. If you're even, if you're using us primarily via tablet, this will make your life even easier. Because everything's right there. The, yeah, everything is just like it is on the website. It's pretty cool. All right. Let me see what else I've got here. Where can I find info on become an icon personal branding intensive? Jennifer, you're in luck. Stay tuned. After this demo, you're going to learn exactly that. That is going to launch for the first time in 2022. We do it twice a year. In, in January, we're going to be running that. So you'll learn more about that here shortly. Krista says, if all my vaults show up, I still have the ability of who I give each one access to. Yes, all of your controls in your member area are going to remain the same. So people are only going to see the vaults that they have been granted access to when they're, when they're in the app. All right. Will people be able to sell other products in our member area? So if they are in a vault, right? If, if it is a vault, then sure. Greg, I don't think this is something that we actually looked at yet, but if you've got a vault that's visible in, in your member area, that somebody, maybe if they click it, they go to a sales page. Right? If they haven't purchased it, they need to go to a sales page. That's, that, that all stays in the app, right?
It does. Yep. Yep.
So it'll be a seamless experience. So if you've got somebody who's already got access to something, but you're selling another vault, a course, a program, that all they do is click that. If you have it set up to, in any other case, redirect to a sales page so they can buy access to that vault, then that stays right there. Pretty, pretty cool. Donna says, I have an Android and I'm not finding the app. So just type it in as you see it up here in the top left, or actually on the top of this phone screen demo that you see, Attract Well, all one word, and you should be able to find that in the Android or the Google Play Store. All right, let's see. What else am I missing? Can I accept push notifications if I accidentally declined or check what I selected? So push notifications, we're going to get to in greater deal on another training. But Greg, is there anything that you would add to that?
Yeah, it, it depends on whether you have Apple or Android. On Apple, I think you can go under Settings. I don't know exactly what you push after Settings, but somewhere under Settings, there's a way to find a list of apps that are allowed to send you notifications. And you would just go find Attract Well and then toggle it back on. If you do a quick, I mean, you can email support and we can find an article for you or do some quick Googling and you can find, you know, search for something like, you know, turning on push notifications for an app after I've declined it or something like that. And you should find an article. I did find one the other day about that and had to do that on my, on my test device. So and on Android, it's a little bit different too. It's, it's under Settings as well. But just, you know, search for maybe notifications, I think. Android allows you to search and then you can find it and toggle it on. So yeah, if you messed it up the first time, you accidentally hit no or tapped out of it or whatever, you can totally turn it back on. I think the other option, and I think Ashley did this yesterday, was like deleting the app and reinstalling it. I think that caused that to pop up that notification or the ask question again. So that's another option.
And I think.
Find it under Settings.
I think the reason why I had that issue yesterday was because I had had the beta version on my phone. So, you know, from brand new, it worked out fine. But in an iPhone, which I have, if you go to Settings, that then notifications is, is pretty high up on the menu. So you'll, you're able to actually go and make those modifications. Okay, so Jennifer, question. I want to create a vault to connect my Martha K stuff, but I don't really know what a vault is yet, since today is my day three. Where do I go for Get Oiling basic training? So you don't need to actually create a vault for things that you've purchased from someone else. So like from Martha Crete, she's got vaults that you've already bought. If you put your email address into the app and you verify your email, everything that you've bought from her is going to show up there and you don't have to do anything else about it. That's not a matter of you, like, there's no more work on your part because you're the one who paid for that. But for your own training, if you want to learn how to create vaults, we've got a number of different resources. I would recommend first, I would recommend first actually going through the setup progress bar when you sign up for, for your Good Oiling account, just to make sure you've got all of your basics covered. That's the, it's got a little, does it show up in our app? There we go. This little bar right up here at the top. On your desktop, you'll see a little rocket ship next to it. So I would go through this first. And then we've got a number of different trainings that you can take advantage of that'll help you focus on very specific things. So if you want to get into moving your groups, we've got a course that teaches that. If you want to create a lead magnet funnel, we've got a little course that teaches that. And there's all of the stuff that we can get you connected to. But I would just start with one thing and just make sure that you've got your site set up. You import your VO file. You know how to send an email, whether that be your upcoming newsletter for January 1st, or a single email out to your people. So get to know these, the CRM, and that's going to be the most important thing first. We have tons of training on our YouTube channel as well. And feel free, our support is here to help you. And you could always come out and chat with us on a live call. All right. Amanda says, now with app notifications, will people get notifications and emails about the vaults if they have the app downloaded? If they have the app downloaded, just want to know to tell people to adjust their notification settings properly so they aren't bombarded. It's a great question, Amanda.
Yeah, let me pop into the member area and I'll show you, there is a notification setting option. Find, let me go down to one that I am not the admin of. So this would be like, kind of what it would be like for somebody who's in your community. Click the little gear icon when you come there and this, if you do it right at the main dashboard, where you have a list of all the vaults that affects the default settings for all the vaults. That's probably where you want to have them do it, click the gear. And there's a new little app check mark here so they can choose email or app. It is on both by default, it's kind of like Facebook. Facebook seems to have toned down the emails a little bit, but they still send you some emails, but like, I don't know, they, they do it a little bit differently. But, but yeah, you can choose kind of the, the timing and whether you get it in the email or app. And there's links to download if they're now, like, where do I go to get this app? If you do, because you do have to, like, to get in here as a member, you still do have to, you know, once you invite them, they get that email with the link in it. To get, you know, to set up their member area account, once they've done that, then they can download the app. And if they go into notifications, there are links here, hard to see, maybe I'll have to adjust that color. But these are actually links, you know, you can click on Apple App Store or Google Play Store. And I believe it'll open up and take you to that specific listing where they can download it right from there. So that's where you go to adjust it, but yeah, it is by default email and app. A lot of people want to turn one or one of the others off.
Excellent, another good question I've seen pop up a couple of times, is the website going anywhere? Is anything changing? Do I have to use the app? Oh, no, 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 you guys, this is just an added bonus. This is an option for you guys, if it's something that you prefer, it's something that you want to use, then you can use it. Your back office, if you like to log into a desktop computer, as I certainly prefer, you can do that and you should keep doing that. Functionality is not changing, of course, if you're going to be designing things, I always recommend a bigger screen, as big a screen as possible. Especially if you get easily frustrated with tech and that's, that's me, hi. So I like big screens, if you do too, don't worry, it's not going anywhere. But this is especially as you're starting to move into using vaults to serve your customers, to educate your customers. I know a lot of you guys probably use the free version of the, the Life Steps app, for instance. Part of the benefit of using that is that you can send push notifications. Those aren't things that are email or text, there's not like an open rate, you know, issue that you have to go through filters. If they downloaded the app, they gave permissions, you can send them stuff whenever you want to. And so you're going to have that same benefit on your terms for your own member area, which is pretty cool. Let's see what else, my friend tried to get the app, she used the email I have on file, but it told her email no record. I'm sure it did something wrong. Yeah, so just, I would copy from her contact card, you know, that, that and verify that her contact has access to that vault. And then, and then maybe paste from the email address you copied in the contact card into her email, just to help her make sure she's got that set up correctly.
Yeah, they, they do have to have set up their member area account. So they have to have been invited to at least one account and click the link to set up their password, even though they don't have to use it to get into the app. They do have to set that up and then they can log in. So if the email address matches, then go ahead and, you know, check, maybe resend, delete them from the vault, add them back to the vault, have them recreate the account of them, that should let them in.
Are we able to get into app via computer as we can on Instagram? That is literally what you've been doing for the whole time you've had your good oiling account before today. So we've always been an app, we are just, you know, we're a browser based app. So we, as, we're a software application, but we're a web based, browser based software application. And so the app now shows up inside of a mobile app. So a mobile app is a container, you're getting the same thing, just inside of a different package. But everything works exactly the same if you prefer your desktop and the way that you've been doing things previously, this doesn't change your life one bit.
Yeah, and when new things come out, changes are made, they will show up in both the app and on the, on the website. So kind of a two for one deal, which was really awesome.
Yep, yep, so yeah, make sure if you're looking for this in the Android or Apple App Store, that you're typing in attract wealth, not good oiling. Remember, this is, the app is called attract wealth. We don't want all of your leads to, to see just right out of the gate that you're selling oils, right? Cause they're going to go good oiling, what's that? They go Google and they're like, oh, this person wants to sell me something, right? We want to help you get more out of growing your business online and part of that is attraction marketing. So attract well is the name, all one word, and you should be able to find that on either of the platforms. Nozella asked, do you mind reviewing where you're able to opt out of other devices with this?
Yeah, that's under the, it's, I call it the my account screen, either in the member area or the back office. In this case, I'm in somebody else's member area. Let's say, I'll pretend I'm somebody who's logging into yours. You'll find that by, I would find that by clicking on my name here and scroll down towards the bottom. There's a manage devices for app notifications and then it'll show the device. It uses the name that the device provides, so some, you know, hopefully people will be able to understand which device it is that's registered. You can choose whether push notifications are on or off and whether to delete the device. If you do plan on keep, if, if you plan on keeping the, or keeping using the same device, but you don't want push notifications, don't delete the device. Just disable push notifications and save, otherwise it'll like keep re-adding it to the list. So deleting it, a device is like literally when you've gotten rid of it and maybe you've sold it or upgraded or something like that, you can just delete it out of your list. So, but yeah, if you, it's the same thing, if I go switch back over here to a back office account. Then I go to my account again, go to the bottom, there's the same section to manage devices for app notifications. And you'll see here that she's got three devices registered here for push on her back office and only two in the member area. So just, that's, that's where you go, so hopefully that helps.
So here's a good question, this pertains to a couple of questions asked here, one from Janelle and another from Krista. So typically, when we give someone access to a vault, and by the way, you guys, if you're like, can I see my blog? Can I see my, you know, my website, my whatever? If you want to see and edit and manage your stuff, your own stuff for your purposes internally, that's the good oiling back office here. In terms of what your people see, will they see this, will they see that? They will see your vaults, because they'll get access to this based on the member area vaults that you give them access to. That's why when you sign up, if you see member areas that you don't maybe remember or recognize, those are things that you've signed up for previously. That come from other people like us, or if you work with me directly, or if you bought from someone who is in our community, that kind of thing. But Greg, question, when we add someone to a vault, typically what happens is we send an email or text automatically that says, hey, head over here and create your login, right? Well, if you've added someone to the vault, do, can we bypass that? Like, do they even have to create a password? If you've given them vault permissions and, and then they go in here, they download the app, they put in the email address that they signed up for or given permissions to your vault with. If they click the button in their email, are they in?
You know what, I actually haven't tested that, that's something that we could probably go see. I don't know off the, offhand whether that would let them in or not without the password. I know it would for sure with the password. But yeah, that's something I can check out after the call maybe and, and see.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I would definitely stick with what you've been doing for now, don't change anything yet. And also I would just not change this period, because not everybody's going to download an app, right? You do want people, if you're giving them credentials, especially if they paid for something, give them the clear, normal, conventional, straightforward way of here, go establish your login. Put, create a password and then you can give them the option of using the member area on the, on the phone, using the app. All right, good question, all right, I'm going to get to a couple more of these. We do have some announcements that we still need to share and I promise, not next week, because we have a very special guest next week. But the week after, we will return to chatting about this app and getting into more demos and answering more specific questions. So let me see, and there's a couple of questions here that aren't about the app that I want to make sure we have time for as well. Okay, um, okay, so that's answered, people can't just jump into the app, they need to have been given access to a vault. Let's see, people are not going to see Alison, your, your homepage, your blog or anything like that in this app unless they get there via a vault. The app is a place for your vaults to live, if it happens to click off to another page, great. But people will see their vaults if you share this with others. Okay, so Cornelia, good question, you wrote a blog post today, you want to set up to notify on the app. Then, then you can, and we'll get into this, again, this is for a future training. If you are sending notifications via push notification, a URL is required. A blog post can be the URL and that is a way to send people to your blog, but they're not just going to go and like browse your site by going into this app. That's not how this works, so we will get into more of that on a future training. Let's see, we use the same email address to sign up for the app that we use for good oil and Camellia, that is correct, yes. So if I want someone to access my vaults through their mobile phone, they download attract well, they'll see my member areas that I've added them to the vaults. That's right, if they use the email address that they signed up for those vaults with, yes, the answer is yes, Suzanne. Okay, all right, so we had a couple of unrelated questions to this that I want to make sure we give some time to. Then we're going to get into some, some exciting announcements. So Greg, is there anything else we want to add on this? Or do we want to kind of leave this brain explosion here today?
I think that's about it, yeah, we can do push notifications and some other, the other fun changes another time.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be a whole training, because that's, push notifications are going to be kind of similar to, you know, like sending your email campaigns or sending your text messages and that kind of thing, which it really kind of deserves its own space. So let's get into a couple of questions from, from folks here. So Kimberly asks, my team and I are going to meet on the fourth to cheer each other on and get moving forward with our good oiling websites. We're all pretty much newbies, like recommendations for a specific sequence of past videos or training we haven't seen on the website to get us up and running together. So I would look for if you've, if you're familiar with this, I don't know how to do this on a mobile device, but on a desktop, if you go to YouTube and go to our channel. If you like go all the way over to the right and the options, there's a search feature where you can actually search the content of our YouTube channel. So I recommend that you look for getting started as a phrase to plug in there. You'll find some videos around just sort of how to get started. I, again, like I mentioned earlier in the call, recommend using really just the built in features in the system like that. Like the little green bar at the top, the progress bar. As a checklist, I would say, make sure you've got your, your story and photo in the system. You've got your social links in the system that's customizing your site and that you learn how to use your CRM. I think the best challenge you could do at the first of the year isn't just a, let's figure out all of our tech and spend time, you know, with our tech hats on challenge. I want to get your business into momentum, so let's do a point based challenge. If you haven't seen this yet, we actually ran this as a training on Facebook ads for years. If you go to get oiling.com/accelerator, you can actually get the downloadable template and a training video that you and your team can roll through together. Either using get oiling or not, right? It's, it's totally usable for anyone, even if you don't have get oiling. So I would encourage you to focus on using something simple like that and utilizing your contact manager. Guys, because that, that's really the main thing, it's easy to get in the weeds with all of the different things that our system can do. But the most important thing you need in a people business is to stay on top of your communication with your people. So that's in your contact manager, so that's where I would definitely recommend to start. Hope that's, that's a lot to start with. All right, Jen says, unrelated question, I started with a basic good oiling site, but about a year and a half ago purchased a web domain and email. Yet for some reason, when my newsletters come to my Gmail account from the form field, it says campaigns@oilyemail.com. Is there a way for this to point to the email I purchased, thought it was supposed to when I purchased it, or is that not the case?
Yes, just can you reach out to us, support at good oiling.com? If you have your own email address on a domain you own, we can totally set up what we call a custom mail server. Which then lets the emails come directly from your email address rather than our, our generic one. The reason we have that other oily email addresses, most people use like a Gmail or Hotmail or some other free account. And then that's how email delivery works, we have to send it through our, our email address on behalf of you. And then, then it's delivered, otherwise the emails, the recipients reject it. So, but yeah, it sounds like you're set up to go, you just need to contact us and we'll get the rest going for you.
Yeah, and just to, to kind of add on to that note, you guys, if you have your own email address at your own domain, if you don't yet, really recommend that you get that. But if you have one, reach out to us, you're going to get better results from sending emails, your deliverability and all of that. If you are sending from your own email address and domain. So if that's over your head, don't worry about it, we'll get to that at a later date, everything at their own pace. But if you have that, definitely get in touch. Jennifer says, since I'm new, will some of the extra features or offerings become available after the $1 trial month? For example, the two way texting on the basic annual plan. I believe you mentioned that you're brand new, so, and if you joined it annual, then I think that there are some things included with that. So I think, I don't know, maybe just get in touch with support and we can make sure that you're connected with everything.
Yeah, and actually, so with the annual plans, it does bill right away, there's a 30 day money back guarantee. You do get access to all the features right away, whether you start for the dollar on the monthly plan or not. So I was just pulling up your account, it doesn't look like you've set up the two way texting yet, but go ahead and do that. Just click the chat link in the upper right hand corner of the back office, it'll walk you through setting that up. It shouldn't charge you because of the promo thing, if it does for some reason, certainly contact us, but it should be free here for the first year due to that promo.
Yes, all right, speaking of promos, you guys, great, big, exciting announcement to share here. If I could get this to open up, I'd like to show you. Hi Grace, Grace is back, everybody, Grace is back, we don't need to do anything else now, there's a baby here. All right, I'm going to, if you guys aren't too distracted by the adorable baby over here on the screen. I am going to share with you some very, very exciting announcements. First, the sales are back. So we normally run sales twice a year, right? We nor, we run specials, giveaways, big things twice a year, convention and Black Friday. Well, this year, we've decided to keep this going, so our holiday sales are back and live for the new year. Couple of reasons for this, number one, yeah, we just love you guys and we want to. And number two, pertaining to the question about the personal branding intensive, we are going to be launching that in the second week, second week of January. And that is a live coaching intensive where you get to work with me. You will also, depending on Jessica's availability, that Jessica's got some content in there as well, she's our graphic designer. We are in there helping you get your brand established and get you into the right action for your brand in the new year. So we want to make sure that everyone who would like to participate in that has a chance to take advantage. So if you are an existing member or you are new, let's talk a little bit about what that looks like, as well as all of the bajillion other things we're giving away, including a giveaway. Which includes one on one with me. So you're going to have an opportunity to win this one on one coaching package with me. There's also the Young Living Groups Masterclass, if you're wanting to get your groups off of Facebook or build some of these vaults that show up in your app, in your mobile app, like we showed you here today. You also get the Pipeline Igniter Course. This is a great way to start getting your brain around the systems and processes you need in your business to start attracting the right people to you. A lot of us are kind of mystified by how it is that we find new people to grow our business online. This helps make sense of that and brings it into the world of plain language that makes sense to you, which is really important. The Personal Branding Intensive, like I mentioned, is also something we're giving away, your own custom website, literally customized to you. Free two way texting, which is normally $9 a month, we get, we're giving that away. As well as free and discounted virtual assistance services. So if you need handholding, if you need something done for you, whatever that might be, we've got options there for you. We're giving away free custom domains, so your name or your business name.com, a free month of get oiling as well as bonus marketing credits. These are the things that you use to send your emails and your texts. You can get a bunch of free marketing credits for the life of your account and an extra half month off. All right, so getting into become an icon, this is entering to win, working through the become an icon intensive with me. This is typically, this is delivered as a, as a group coaching program. So we're together in a group and we can certainly work together in the group, which is a lot of fun. If you've been through become an icon, you want to share some of your insights in the chat, definitely let folks know. But, but you would actually, if you win this, be working with me. So every week, we would be sitting down to review the work that you've done. So you're not just trying to keep up and, you know, watch the videos and learn and everything, you're going to get my feedback on the action that you're taking. So you'll have me coaching you through this process. Now you get one entry, if you are a new monthly member, right? So if you've signed up for a month to month plan, you do get one entry into Icon Coaching with me. You get three entries if you are. You get three entries if you are new at basic or annual, or if you renew at annual. So if you're an existing monthly customer and you upgrade to annual at basic or above, or you are a new customer at annual, basic or above. You could also refer a new get oiling member. When you use your link, there's a link to share my website in your dashboard. If you scroll down, you can actually find your good oiling referral link. If you refer a new member, every time you refer a new member, you get three entries into win. And then when you do, you actually share a free month with your person that you've, that you have shared good oiling with. Now the Personal Branding Intensive is small group coaching. Like I mentioned, it's held only twice a year where we get to work together on your personal brand messaging, your content and your business strategy. We're going to be adding some new training to this. So this is not exactly the same every time we do run this twice a year, but there's always a little something extra added and we've got some really exciting things coming for this version, our winter 2022. And then of course, this is included. This is not the coaching with me that I just mentioned, but the, the, the become an icon intensive itself is included with your purchase or your upgrade to annual, basic and higher. Okay. Now the group's masterclass, some of you are familiar with this. If you are not yet getting excited, this is how to move your groups off of Facebook. It's also hidden inside of here. How to build a lead group and how to build a builder group, right? To sort of serve your brand partners and to serve leads in the direction of getting started and becoming a customer. This is a complete course. It's got quick videos, how-tos, templates, planners, everything that you need. If you've gone through this, let everybody know what you think. So they know what they're getting in the chat. What we're doing here is streamlining your Young Living education with a get oiling member area. And this will be free for all new members, upgrades and renewals. You get access to this. Now the Pipeline Igniter is a course that we created on the attract well platform. This is originally geared toward new coaches and people who are new in service-based businesses. And this is the perfect way for you to start understanding how to talk about what it is that you do, understanding who it is that you help and how. If you've ever wondered how to like narrow in what some of us like to call a bat signal, this is a really great way to figure that out. So the Pipeline Igniter creates a simple approach for you to get really good leads for your business. So you can get clear on who you help, how you help them and how to share what it is that you do. Not just, I'm a young living brand partner, right? But here is who I help. Here's what you get from working with me so that you can introduce them to Young Living. Once they say, yes, I want to work with you, right? And then this will be free, of course, as well for all new members, upgrades and renewals. The hundred dollar website, this is a brand new offer, you guys. This is an exclusive deal to get a custom designed one-page website for your business, including a website template and an hour of VA services to customize it for only $125. If you are a new member of good oiling at basic and higher, you can have this deal for $125. Enormous savings here, a website template and work done on it with a VA to your specs. 125 bucks for all new members at basic and higher. Now the hundred dollar website gets a little better, you guys. You can get a custom designed one-page website for your business, including a website template and an hour of VA services plus a hundred dollar discount on a full website build. If you are an annual customer, you are going to get access to the thing I just told you, you're just getting it, right? But then you could upgrade to a full build with a hundred dollar discount. You can also save on VA services. We now have VA services, you guys, if you need work done for you. You can transfer your website over, you can get help setting things up. You can have a handholding session where we just walk you through what is you, you need to know to do so that you can run your business. We can do that for you. You're getting this for 10% off during this deal. And this is available to all new monthly and annual customers. And then you also get some free VA services when you sign up for annual. So if you're signing up at, at basic and higher at annual, you can work with us. We get a free hour of VA services. Pretty cool, right? All right. Now you also can get access to an exclusive one-on-one tech strategy consult. If you have a larger team, if you have a bigger business, if you have multiple businesses that you want to consolidate into operating on your good oiling platform. For instance, you have the opportunity to work with us to create a digital strategy for your business on a dedicated one-on-one call. And this is available complimentary to all new annual pro and diamond members on our platform. And that's a sit down with me and sometimes we will even ask Greg to step away from his wizardry and join us if we need to. And guys, that's not all. There's also free two-way texting. If you've been using a texting platform or you've been texting manually, you don't have to pay for another service anymore or do all of that work yourself. You can get free two-way texting. I believe it's three months for new basic and above monthly plans and a whole year of free two-way texting. It's normally $9 a month when you sign up at basic and above at annual, right? So that's no additional service fee. You get your own phone number. You can text and chat back and forth. You don't need another service for texting anymore when you have us. You can also get a custom domain as well as marketing credits, additional planned savings, 30-day money back guarantee. All of this is available. If you head over to get oiling.com now to get started. So getting started and either at monthly or annual has its perks. You can learn all of those at get oiling.com. And by the way, if you are an existing get oiling customer, we love you very much and we want you to email us. Because if you're looking for a way to take advantage of the things that I've just shared with you, we are able to look at your account and tell you what is needed in order for you to be able to, to make that swap, to make that upgrade, to renew early or whatever it is that you want to do so that you can reach your goals. Take advantage of these things that are being offered. So make sure that you reach out to us, good oiling.com. All right. And so let's, we don't have any website reviews scheduled for today and we are getting close to the close of the call. There's so many, so many comments, absolute party in the chat today, you guys. Thank you for being such an amazing group. Thank you, Grace, for being such a smiley baby. She's so cute. All right. So Kimberly, these prices are these prices for new good oiling folks only. So the prices are the same for everyone. There are ways for us to help you take advantage of what we're offering if you're an existing customer. So if you have questions about that, or you want to see what you're eligible for, or what would be required for you to be able to upgrade to other things, then just shoot us an email, support@goodoil.com. And yes, to, to answer your question as well, Renee, just shoot us a message. All of these things have some way of being offered to you as an existing customer. So please reach out and we can clarify based on your account because not everybody is on the same plan. And you know, monthly versus annual and all that kind of stuff. All right. So yeah, just shoot us a message. Let us know. Is there something in particular that you would like to make sure you're getting access to? Shoot us an email, support@goodoil.com and we could look at your individual account and make sure that we're clear on that. I think that's it. Allison says, I really appreciate the simple things that you offer as well as the fancy stuff. Thanks. We appreciate you for appreciating that and we, we love helping to serve your business. Yeah, everybody, just round of applause for, for this app that just appeared today for Greg. Just absolutely excited about this. And, and surprise, I don't know that we were going to do this like until next year. Like, well, let's tell them. So we're here. So we're back here again next week where simple grace is going to be here next week. So you guys might want to show up and invite your friends. Because Janelle, who got featured on Young Living's own Facebook page last week, is going to be coming to pump you guys up and tell you how you can go and get started with an awesome new year. So make sure that you show up. We're excited to have you. I hope Grace is just as happy and bouncy and dancy next week, because that's just such a joy to see. We love you guys and we will see you next week.